Can you hear me, Jason?
I can hear you, sir. Can you hear me?
I can hear you and I can see you.
Great. Okay, whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We please start the roll call.
Council President McIrvin. Councilmember O'Halloran. Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Albertson. Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Perez. And Councilmember Prince. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, first up is a proclamation.
Alright, proclamation, whereas the city of Renton is bounded by Lake Washington shoreline and encompasses numerous waterways, and whereas a large number of Renton residents of all ages engage in recreational boating, and whereas on average 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the US, with the vast majority of those accidents caused by human error, poor judgment, and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors, whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets, and whereas the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Renton Flotilla 130-02-05 is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks. Now therefore, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim, May 21st through 27th, 2022, to be Safe Boating and Paddling Week in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves to learning about and practicing safe boating, including wearing life jackets. The witness whereof I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 23rd day of May 2022. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Irvin.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McIrvin, second by Councilmember Prince, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Alright, motion carried. And tonight, to accept the proclamation is Jeff Hunter, and he is the commander of the US Coast Guard Auxiliary. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor Pavoni and the esteemed council members. My name is Jeffrey Hunter, and I am the commander of Flotilla 1300205 here in Renton. My colleagues and I are from our local US Coast Guard Auxiliary flotilla and express our thanks for your support of the proclamation of Safe Boating and Paddling Week. We, the Coast Guard Auxiliary, are the volunteer civilian segment of the United States Coast Guard, and the majority of our efforts are aimed at promoting recreational boating safety. We are working on building collaborative relationships with all local cities, law enforcement, and emergency response agencies, so that we can help the public learn how to be safer on the water. Through the Coast Guard Auxiliary, we provide boating education classes, both online and in person. We offer courtesy vessel safety checks for all types of boats, including paddlecraft, and can provide other kinds of educational and outreach activities in tandem with other agencies serving Renton and the surrounding communities. We in the Auxiliary look forward to working with the city of Renton again this year to have a summer without a single tragedy on our local waterways. Let's redouble our efforts to promote life jacket wearing, the single easiest way to prevent on-water fatalities. We can also eliminate boating under the influence, and prepare to educate boaters and paddlers to enjoy our local waters safely. We thank you, and we look forward to working with you this year.
Alright, thank you very much, and hopefully we'll have sunny weather soon, and everybody will be out boating. We want to keep everybody safe, so thank you very much for your time tonight. Next up, we're going to have a public hearing, Economic Recovery Emergency Ordinance extending interim zoning controls, and Brittany Gilia will be presenting. Brittany, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to the City Council. For the record, my name is Brittany Gilia, and I'm an associate planner with Community and Economic Development here before you today to present a public hearing to extend interim zoning controls related to economic recovery. So some background on the interim zoning controls. The very first interim zoning controls for economic recovery were the UN Emergency Ordinance 5974 that was adopted on July 13th, 2020. This initial ordinance established the free economic recovery right-of-way use permits, and also economic recovery signage, both of which I'll explain later in the presentation. And this initial ordinance was extended and amended a few times through Ordinance 59976018, and it was most recently extended via Ordinance 6039, which is the ordinance in effect today. If Ordinance 6039 is not extended, it is set to expire on June 6th, 2022. So the ordinance states the continued need for economic recovery mitigation measures to assist businesses throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and that Washington is still in a state of emergency due to the public health crisis. This most recent extension, Ordinance 6039, continued the allowance of economic recovery right-of-way use permits, which are the free permits that allow business expansions to have sidewalk cafes, parklets, and then also economic recovery signage, which are additional signs that businesses can utilize to advertise changes to their offerings due to the pandemic. And economic recovery right-of-way use permits that were issued as part of any of the earlier ordinances were extended to remain valid if they had been valid on December 7th, 2021, which was the last expiration date for Ordinance 6018. This extension also had amendments to the initial interim zoning controls to include a statement that allows prefabricated parklets as part of the scope of the economic recovery right-of-way use permit, as well as to allow temporary business expansions into adjacent tenant spaces, to do so without land use review or a temporary use permit that would otherwise be required. This did not waive the need for building permitting, but it was hopefully to try to ease some of the obstacles that might have been presented to business owners at the beginning of the pandemic. So at the bottom of the screen, you can see there is a graphic with some green highlights on there. This sort of illustrates the potential areas that businesses could expand, and so there's some area on the sidewalk, the adjacent parking space, or even the adjacent tenant space. And the other photo on the bottom is of a prefabricated parklet. And lastly, the extension continued the temporary curbside 15-minute pickup stalls that are throughout the center downtown or CD zone, as well as continuing the waived parking fees in the city center parking garage on South Second Street. And so tonight, staff would like to propose an extension of the interim zoning controls for an additional six months, to be extended until November 23rd, 2022. We are also proposing to have all of the economic recovery right-of-way use permits to continue to be available until that same day, November 23rd, 2022, and to have all of the existing, still valid permits that are with, remain valid through June 6th, 2022, to be extended to coincide with this new date. And so, the next steps for tonight would be to accept the public testimony regarding the proposed extension of interim zoning controls, with first and second reading to be effective immediately upon adoption, and if adopted, the ordinance will sunset on November 23rd, 2022, and all economic recovery business expansions and signage would need to be removed. And so if there's anyone out there watching tonight, or listening in, that is a business or knows of a business that would like assistance to understand more on what they can do with this ordinance to help their operations, feel free to give me an email or call. I can be reached at BGILIA@rentonwa.gov, or 425-430-7246, and I'd be happy to sit down and chat about permitting. And this concludes the end of the presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions for Brittany? Okay, do we have any correspondence?
We had no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this matter?
No one has signed up in advance to speak regarding this matter. Mr. Mayor, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel regarding tonight's public hearing? If so, please raise your hand. And it looks like we do have a hand raised. Diane. Diane Dobson, go ahead.
Hello, Diane, if you're, if you're talking, you are muted.
Thank you very much. Diane Dobson from the Renton Chamber of Commerce want to thank the council for their favorable consideration to the extension of Ordinance 6039 tonight, but also want to take a moment of privilege and opportunity to extend a heartfelt appreciation to Ms. Gilia of the city of Renton. She has done an outstanding job in, in a concierge service to help businesses through the pandemic as they navigate various elements of permitting and processing, and she is really a treasure and gift to the Community and Economic Development Department there. So thank you to the city of Renton.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else signed up that would like to speak?
I see no other hands, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, yes. It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Irvin. There, the public hearing be closed. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, motion here. Next up, we have the administrative report.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Construction for the Cascade Park Playground Replacement Project began today, May 23rd, with completion scheduled for mid-July of 2022. Cascade Park will remain open, but the work area, including the existing playground, new play area, and a portion of the paved drive off of 126th Avenue Southwest, will be closed to the public during construction. Additional information can be found at rentonwa.gov/currentprojects. On Wednesday, June 1st, from 6 o'clock to 8:00 PM, is the annual scout night, hosted by Regional Renton Fire Authority and Renton Police Department at Fire Station 14. All scouting groups within Renton service areas through 5th grade are invited to join us for this free event. Pre-registration is required. Renton Police is partnering with the Renton Regional Fire Authority to offer our first Senior Public Safety Academy on Thursdays, June 2nd through July 7th, from 9:00 to 10:30 AM, at the Senior Activity Center. The six-week program offers adults ages 50 and above the chance to learn more about public safety through educational presentations and fun interactive activities. Space is limited, so please register today with course number 10719 at rentonwa.gov/register. The city of Renton, in partnership with Renton Technical College and Renton Chamber of Commerce, will host the Renton Career Fair on Friday, June 3rd, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, at Renton Technical College Cafeteria, Roberts Campus Center, Building I, at 3,000 Northeast 4th Street. There will be over 55 organizations who are hiring, and admission is free. Also, take advantage of a drop-in Zoom resume help workshop on May 31st and June 1st, 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM. For more information on the fair and to register, go to renton.com/rentoncareerfair. Join your neighbors and police officers for coffee and conversations at Coffee with the Cop on June 8th, at the Rose Gift House and Coffee, 226 Main Avenue South, from 10:00 AM to noon. Representatives from the police department will be available to answer your questions about crime prevention, traffic enforcement, investigations, recruitment, or community programs, and services that are available to the Renton community. Solid Waste Utilities, second event in their series of three mini-recycle events, will be on Saturday, June 11th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at Renton Technical College North Parking Lot, Northeast 6th Place and Monroe Avenue Northeast. You can bring mattresses, cardboard, and vehicle tires for recycling. On Monday, June 6th, at 10:00 AM, at the city of Renton, or the city of Renton, will be raising the LGBTQ pride flag in front of City Hall. This year's honor of raising the flag will be our own council member Carmen Rivera. The pride flag is used to represent the LGBTQ community, and is used to show support and express pride in the community. Throughout the month of June, our communications will be providing updates on ways you can support the LGBTQ community and celebrate Pride Month. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Thank you. Next up is audience comment. We have no one signed up to speak, so we're on a consent agenda of four items. Is there anything that council would like for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor, Council President McIrvin. Seeing that I move the council approved consent agenda as published, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President McIrvin, second by Councilmember Prince, that consent agenda be adopted as published. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Alright, motion carries. On unfinished business, Council President McIrvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, maybe the whole has one major report.
A committed whole committee report, this is regarding Clean Economy Strategy 2.0 update. The Committee of the Whole authorizes staff to proceed with the Clean Economy Strategy 2.0 Planning Effort and Public Participation Process.
Mayor.
Yes, Council President McIrvin.
I move the council to confer with the, maybe the whole.
It's been moved by Council President McIrvin, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the committee of the whole in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Right, motion carries. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the finance committee has seven reports this evening.
Okay, the first report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. Finance Committee approves the following payments: total payment of $9,44,380.57 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and three wire transfers. Payroll is a total payment of $1,628,518.49 for payroll vouchers, including 605 direct deposits and 10 checks. This is the April 16th through 30th pay period. Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $28,012.29, and municipal court vouchers totaling $2,685.88.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council to confer with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding a supplement to an agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase 4 project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the local agency agreement supplement number two with the Washington State Department of Transportation in the amount of $9,293,000 for construction fund obligation for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase 4 project.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council to confer with the Finance Committee Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay.
Right. The, the next report is also in agreement with the WashDOT for grant obligation for the Bronson Way Bridge Seismic retrofit and painting project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve supplement number two to the WashDOT Local Program State Funding Agreement, which is our contract number 18125, in the amount of $2,514,500 for the construction phase of the Bronson Way Bridge Seismic retrofit and painting project, which is TIP number 15, and all subsequent as supplements to this agreement necessary to accomplish the project.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council to confer with the Finance Committee Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a reorganization of the Public Works Department to establish the Sustainability and Solid Waste Section. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve: one, the proposed reorganization of the Department of Public Works with the addition of a Sustainability and Solid Waste Section; two, authorize the requested conversion of the existing solid waste coordinator, senior program specialist, and program specialist positions, which are salary grades of 25, A15, A13, to a solid waste programs manager, senior sustainability program specialist, and sustainability programs specialist, which are M25, A18, and A16. Authorize the requested addition of a one-time or one full-time equivalent, with basically one position for sustainability and solid waste manager, a half-time position for sustainability program specialist, one and a half FTEs for sustainability program specialist, and two FD for maintenance service worker one, and finally authorize the Public Works Department to hire the preferred candidates at a salary of up to Step E for each of the proposed position, depending on qualifications of the applicant.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Halloran. This Public Works Department reorganization is in support of the aforementioned Clean Economy Strategy. And with that, I move the council to confer with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next report is regarding a utility bill leak adjustment request for customer account 2801 Sunset Boulevard LLC. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adjust customer account 004340000 in the amount of $2,950.26 for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak, in accordance with Rent Municipal Code 8-4-46 and 8-5-23.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council to confer with the Finance Committee Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries.
Right, the next is also utility billing leak adjustment, this time for customer M2 Renton LLC. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adjust customer account 064066-000 in the amount of $20,919.15 for excess sewer consumption caused by a qualified water line leak, in accordance with Rent Municipal Code 8-5-23.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council to confer with the Finance Committee Committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Council President McIrvin, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries.
Right, the last report for Finance Committee is regarding the Springbrook Creek Wetlands Mitigation Bank credit sale agreement with the Renton School District for Elementary School Number 16. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to sell 0.196 mitigation credits from the Springbrook Creek Wetland Mitigation Bank, the SMB, to the Renton School District in the amount of $230,300 in order to permanently impact, or fill approximately 0.28 acres of wetland for the Renton School District Elementary School Number 16 development. The Committee further recommends that the mayor be authorized to enter into an agreement with the Renton School District to effectuate the sale. Additionally, the Committee recommends that the related resolution be presented for adoption.
And Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the council to confer with the Finance Committee Committee.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries. And we are on to Councilmember Rivera.
No, I'm not.
Councilmember Albertson.
No, I'm just business person.
Councilmember Van.
I'm not finished with this presentation.
Councilmember Perez.
No, I'm finished, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
No.
Alright, so we are on to legislation. We have two resolutions, and one ordinance for first, second reading, and two ordinance for first reading.
Right, the first resolution is regarding, or the Open Public Meetings Act. So, resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, rescinding Resolution Number 4465, effective June 1st, 2022, directing meetings covered by the Open Public Meetings Act, be located at a physical location for public attendance, and contemplating that additional opportunities and means of attending and/or listening to meetings remotely may be separately provided.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President McIrvin.
I move the resolution be adopted as read, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember, Council President McIrvin, second by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read, in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And the next resolution is regarding the sale of those credits to the Renton School District. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into mitigation credit purchase agreement, and acknowledgment with Renton School District Number 403, and further authorizing the sale of 0.196 credits from the Springbrook Creek Wetland Mitigation Bank for the sum of $230,300.
Mr. Van. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the resolution being adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read, in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, this ordinance is up for first reading, and advancement to second and final reading is regarding the extension of the economic recovery permits and signs. So, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, extending the interim zoning controls established by ordinance number 5974, and extended and amended by ordinance 5997, extended again by ordinance 6018, and again by ordinance 6039, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor. It's referenced, I move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading tonight. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember, Council President McIrvin, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's meeting, in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay.
Alright, I'll read, I'll read it again. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, extending the interim zoning controls established by ordinance number 5974, and extended and amended by ordinance 5997, extended by ordinance 6018, and extended again by ordinance 6039, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Prince, move the ordinance be adopted as read. Sir, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be adopted as read. The second reading requires roll call.
Hey, Council President McIrvin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson. Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
Alright, next up, we have an ordinance for first reading, and it's regarding the reorganization of the Public Works Department. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 3-7 of the Renton Municipal Code to update Public Works Department divisions pursuant to reorganizations, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
And Mr. Mayor. Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. In discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Here is.
Right, the final ordinance is also for first reading. It too is regarding the reorg for the Public Works Department, but is about the salary table. So, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting an amended 2022 City of Renton Salary Table to implement and authorize reorganization of the Public Works Department, and And reinserting an existing position that was previously inadvertently omitted from the salary table and establishing an effective date.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Why did she say aye there? All right, moving on to new business. Uh Council President McGurvin.
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, uh first I'd like to announce that on Monday, May thirtieth, uh there will be no meetings for the Memorial Day holiday. Uh so we will be meeting again on June sixth, uh the community hall will be meeting at uh six P M uh in the uh council conference room. Uh there's one item on the agenda, uh and that is the renaming of the senior center, and then at seven P M we will have our uh regular council meeting. Uh in council chambers, I'm so excited to say that, so at seven P M. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, uh pursuant to the clean economy strategy, I'd like to announce that the public is invited to join. An online workshop to help shape the future of the city's climate mitigation and action plan and resiliency. And this online meeting will take place Wednesday, May the twenty-fifth, from six P M to seven thirty P M. Registration is required, you can register by going to rentences.com, and that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee will be meeting on Monday, June sixth, at five fifteen P M. To discuss the renaming of senior center and the first and third maintenance update. Councilmember Alberston.
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, June sixth, at four fifteen P M, utilities committee be- uh committee will be meeting. Uh in council conference room and a video conference. Two items on the agenda, agreement, right, number one, agreement amendment with Tetra Tech, for break for the Sea River. Two oh five project legacy certification. And secondly, emerging issues in utilities, including stormwater management action plan update, and the downtown utility improvement project update, that's all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Perez.
On new business, Mr. Mayor.
Right, Councilmember Prince, no new business. Hey, what is the wish to council?
I guess, I just wanted to ask, I just wanted to announce that on June sixth, twenty twenty-two. Uh the Transportation Committee will miss cancel.
Okay, what is the wish to council now?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move the council meeting recessed into the executive session for approximately thirty minutes to discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty thirty-one ten one high. The motion will actually be taken and the council meeting will be adjourned when the executive session is occurred.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember, Council President McGurvin, second by Councilmember Prince. That the council adjourned the executive session um for approximately thirty minutes, there will be no action taken and adjourned directly after. All in favor signify by saying aye.